Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here to those in person. And for those who are watching us live streaming, I will ask our legal counsel to take a roll and establish a quorum.
Member Benitez?
Ooh, out of order, here.
President Craighead?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto is absent, and we have a quorum.
Thank you.
So we have three attorneys tonight? Is this what?
Well, I was under the impression...
I borrowed Jim tonight, just for tonight. I made him an attorney.
Yeah. He's an honorary attorney this evening, apparently. I'll be handing out promotions all night. Now, we will have Mr. Miller lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
For those of you present in the room, the Board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms here by our newly designated legal counsel. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The Board took action on the following items. Item 3.1, the Board voted 4-0 with Mr. Otto absent to approve a number of public employee appointments. I will turn it over to Mr. Moskowitz to provide specifics.
Thank you, President Craighead. It's my honor to announce some of the promotions. These are on behalf of Mr. Samuels and Dr. Lund, who are out. Otherwise, they would be here announcing the promotions within their departments. So we have Monica Cole Jackson. She's a new hire who will be the Assistant Principal at 50% at Keller Middle School and 50% Lindbergh Middle School. John Nann is a teacher on special assignment at Reed. He will be the Assistant Principal at Lindsay Middle School. Nadia Jones is a counselor in the secondary office. She will be the Head Counselor at Wilson High School. And at a non-school site, Kevin Smith, who's a teacher on special assignment in OCIPD, will now be a Program Specialist in OCIPD. There are some other lateral moves as well, which will be posted on our district website momentarily, if not already there. But yes, really, really proud and excited for these promotees.
Okay, wonderful. Are any of them here to be recognized or before we move on?
No.
Okay, vaca-- it's summer after all. It is summer. Okay. On item 3.3, the Board voted 4-0 with Mr. Otto absent to approve a settlement in the workers' compensation case that is listed on the agenda. Regarding item 3.4, the Board voted to suspend a classified employee by a 4-0 vote with Mr. Otto absent. We are now at adoption of the agenda. We need a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 4-0. Let's see. Now, we will move our attention to the screens for a Vision in Action video.
My name is Ruthie, and I'm a student leader from the Green Schools Campaign. So, we were formed in August of 2020 at Poly High School, which is where our biggest club is at. We are a group of high schoolers that have worked to transition the district off of fossil fuels. And over time, that has come to be a partnership of the district that created a policy we passed in August of 2022. And now, that looks like a task force. Through the Vision 2035 program, we had kind of a smaller sustainability section where we further outlined those goals. And both the policy and the goals set now have created the overall district's sustainability plan. So we're for sure going to continue working with the district. For instance, in terms of tackling waste, we're looking at having a program that has students run waste management systems at schools. And that way, students in the Green Schools Campaign and the district in the broader sense can come and continue to participate in the work to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. In addition to continuing working on the policy, the Green Schools Campaign has kind of pivoted to also partner with other organizations, like the Sunrise Movement. And if you're looking to not only get involved in policy like the Green Schools Campaign works with, or waste like we're going to continue to work with, but also more of the social justice aspect of it, you can come and join us at Sunrise.
Well, that was wonderful, and I know we all remember the process and what it took to come up with that policy and the collaboration. And we are so proud of our students for that effort, because they were beyond dedicated to the cause of sustainability. Okay, let's see. So this is the time set aside for a public hearing regarding the intention of the district to consider entering an energy conservation services contract with Mesa Energy Systems Incorporated, doing business as MCOR Services, Mesa Energy. And from the speakers I have, there's no one who has requested to speak on the public hearing.
That's correct. You should open the hearing and then close the hearing.
Okay, I will officially say the words "I'm opening the hearing." Sorry about that. So I am opening the hearing. Unless there's anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on the issue, then I will close the hearing, and we will move on to public testimony listed on the agenda. And just confirming, we do not have anybody...
We do not have anybody on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay. Then we will move to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. And just as a reminder, for those of you who are speaking on items not on the agenda, it's a three-minute limit, so the timer is up on the screens. In view, hopefully, in view of the speakers, we ask that you direct your comments to the Chair, not individual Board members or staff. And so we will start. The first speaker will be Ruby Engel.
Good evening, Board Education Members. My name is Ruby Engel. I'm a Health Assistant at Avalon located on Catalina Island. As I explained to you in my July 10, 2024 email, the district reduced my hours and eliminated my health insurance in the spring of 2023. My union CSA and I determined that this action was unlawful, and an administrative law judge issued a decision on June 21, 2024, agreeing with this. The judge ordered the district to restore my hours and health insurance along with back pay. Unfortunately, on July 11, 2024, the district appealed this decision-- I'm sorry, I'm nervous-- delaying the restitution-- restoration of my hours and back pay until 2025 at the earliest. As authority vested with approving all expenditures, you, the Board members, must direct the district to drop this appeal. I love serving our students and community. I have an amazing relationship with all the students on campus. For example, I was mentioned in two graduation speeches and listed by over eight seniors as our favorite person in the yearbook. The teachers, classified staff, school site council, and community members have all agreed that we need a full-time health assistant here at Avalon, especially now that we will be a preschool through 12th grade school. By cutting your hours, we are depriving the students of Catalina Island the medical and emotional support that they deserve. In addition, my own daughter, who also attends Avalon, has medical issues. And by pushing me off the district, provided medical benefit, it has negatively impacted the well-being of another Avalon student, my child. As her specialty doctors are expensive and not having insurance has caused tremendous stress, I urge you to save the district the expense of this wasteful legal appeal, which will be more expensive than simply restoring my hours so that I continue to support our community in Catalina by dropping this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have DeGeneres.
Good afternoon, fellow Board members and directors. My name is DeGeneres Hubbard, and I am the CSEA Chapter Two President. I'm here to speak on the Ruby Engel perp case. I'm asking each and every one of you to appeal the administrative-- to appeal-- by appealing the administrative law judge's decision, the district is delaying the resolution of this unfair labor practice until 2025 at the earliest. In addition, this appeal also delays resolution of the unfair labor practice relating to the 2024 reductions. CSEA and the impacted members are ready and willing to move forward with the district, but this appeal is standing in our way. It is actually more cost-effective for the district to accept the judge's decision. It will cost the district tens of thousands of dollars in attorney fees to carry out this appeal. CSEA wants to work with the Board and the district, because the district allocates resources to students and staff who serve these students. In contrast, the district, based on their actions, apparently wants to allocate resources to our-- the attorneys that represent Long Beach Unified School District. And this is in no way affects the Vision 2035 that we have implemented for the community students and staff that work for your students. I personally went over to Catalina, and it's atrocious and appalling when our school district employees have to work four jobs just to make it. And then when they hear that, the health assistant, everyone goes to Ms. Engel's office, and she's there for everyone. And for her to have her hours reduced and for us to stand in legal court battle is not beneficial for the Long Beach Unified School District. At one time, the Long Beach Unified School District used to be one of the best school districts in the nation. But if we do not take care of our own, our talented treasures, and we treat them like trash, if this continues, we're going to lose a whole many, many more employees that are here, because it's not about the work that we do, but it's about the passion that we have for all our families and our students that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Trinida.
My name is Trinida, and I am a CSEA, and I am a steward. I am speaking on behalf of Ruby Engel, the perp case. I ask that the Board not appeal this case. You guys have already done it, and I ask that you guys drop the case for many reasons. Ms. Engel, be restored to her health assistant position at full capacity. The case has already been settled and be back to her full benefits, her back pay, her extra hours. She is an excellent worker with many people. She has already been spoken on her behalf, because she's a good worker. I recently went to Avalon and observed Ms. Engel. And I just want to say, she is a good worker. And I'm going to give you an example as far as how she's a good worker. There was an incident with a student that was hurt on the playground. And she knew the student by the name and was able to calm him down and was very kind-hearted and fixed the wound. And I was just so-- I don't know, I was just-- I don't know, I was just so fabulous by that, that she did that. And he went back to class, she did what she had to do, and she went back to cla-- you know, he went back to class. So not only is she good with the student, she is good with her coworkers. And along in having that camaraderie against, you know, amongst one another, this day, there was a celebration, and everyone seemed to get along, which was very, very good. Everything seemed to be comfortable between coworkers. I do not understand why would you want to take this away from her? She is very happy in her position and able to support herself and her family. Nevertheless, the main reason why I am here is to prevent the district from wasting more money and tie with an appeal, so this member--
I'm done. I'm sorry. Thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have reports from our superintendent advisory groups. So we'll start with the Business Budget and Policy Development Group.
Miss Chairman, we do have one more speaker, the fourth speaker.
I think that was four, no?
Ms. Navarro, Jaclyn Navarro.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ms. Navarro.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jaclyn Navarro. I was here to speak regarding an incident that occurred back in May 24, 2024. My son got injured at school by the principal. He had got in trouble selling some chips, and he-- they found his bag. And obviously, I know that's not-- I didn't know that wasn't allowed, but he was trying to make some money for his baseball team, for his baseball stuff. But when I got to the office, my son stated that the principal had pushed him against the wall and pretty much pulled him to his office and threw him down on the floor. So he's very, like, kind of traumatized, because he's telling me he doesn't want to return to Lafayette. He goes to Lafayette Elementary. And the following year would be his fifth grade-- he's gone to this school since preschool. So now, he's telling me that he's scared to go back because of what happened. I did report this to the police department, since it was, you know, since my son got injured. And he does have an issue on his back, on his spine, like scoliosis issue. So that's why I was pretty much upset of how they handled-- the staff there was covering up for the principal there, saying, "Oh, nothing happened." And all I was asking for is, like, to view the video there. And I did talk to Ms. Thomas, Jasmine-- I believe her name is Jasmine Thomas, that works for the district. And she kept giving me excuses, she was going to make an appointment, and nothing happened. So I'm just here to see if I can get some kind of, like, answers to-- if I can even view a video of what happened to my-- he's here, President Matthew Valencia, to just exactly know what happened. They're just giving me the runaround, and I just want to know. Help on that.
Can we have-- can we have staff follow up with Ms. Navarro? I see people taking notes, so, Mr. Suarez, are you-- somebody?
Yes.
Will be following up with you?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have reports from the Superintendent Advisory Groups, and we'll start with the Business Budget and Policy Development Group.
No reports from us, Madam Chair, other than we're in pause and looking forward to updating and creating new policies for this upcoming academic year.
Thank you. Next, we have Instruction and Student Learning Supports.
Really no report, other than the recommendation that there is training for our teachers for working with our EL students and for working with our SPET students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, Workforce Development?
Yes, in workforce development or HR, obviously, there's a lot of movement, but no report today.
And Mr. Otto's not here, but do we have a report on the Student Outcome Focused Governance? Yeah.
No report from us, other than we're looking forward to our new monitoring calendar for this coming school year as well, highlighting our-- focused on our Board's Goals 1 through 4.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our Consent Calendar, and we need a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just have a couple of questions. Well, first of all, I'd like to commend Gant and Prisk's PTA and Henry's Foundation for their donation to the school. Henry's Foundation donated $36,480. Gant's PTA donated $51,500. And Prisk's PTA donated $73,677. So kudos to you for your hard work, parents there. Item number-- let's see, 14.7. Item number 17, the Contract with Uprooted Academy to Provide Counseling and Preparation Workshops for Students and Their Families. I guess my question is, will all students and families have access to these services and workshops? Or is it specifically for some grades?
It's high school age. It's connected to our Black Student Achievement Initiative, but any student could access the services.
And then one more, item number 40. If someone can just elaborate on the Contract with New Direction Solutions for $2 million?
Yes, so that is to provide registered behavior technician staff to our elementary schools. We currently have 34 contracted, and they provide support-- behavior support to the schools, so they are assigned to the school, and then the principal determines where the students are, that they need support from these registered behavior technicians.
Any further discussion? Then I will ask Mr. Suarez to take a roll call vote.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
With Member Otto absent, the motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Consent Calendar B.
Move to approve?
Before--
Sorry, Eric.
Yeah. Out of abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from Consent Calendar to B, item 15, as I have a potential conflict of interest under state law.
Move to approve?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 3-0 with one abstention. Next on the agenda, we have Superintendent Items. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. Tonight, this is simply an information item, the receipt of the Williams Lawsuit Quarterly Report indicating no complaints, so therefore, no resolutions, and just submitting this to-- for signature to the Board and submission to the county office.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's actually an information item. It's just for receipt. That's okay. I may have not said that correctly.
My apologies.
I do appreciate the effort, though. I do appreciate that. Next on the agenda is New Business. Item 17.1, Approval of Child Development Centers Rate Increase for Fee-Based Programs. And I do need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question on this item. Actually, a couple of questions. Dr. Baker, I'm not sure who on the exec team can answer this, but-- so my understanding is to make up for some deficits right now. The cost will be $60 a day, up from $45 a day. So I'm wondering what the breakdown is and what percent of our students participate in the fee-based program? And then also, if-- what kind of analysis was done, like, why 60 and not 75? And it's coming from a question around, will this potentially be cost prohibitive, given that early care and education is one of our priorities and it's a community need? Just, you know, finding right now affordable access to high-quality early education centers and facilities? So just kind of background on this.
Do you want to jump in, and then I can just fill in anything?
Yes. I'll start, and please feel free to jump in. I don't have the specific breakdown on the number of students that where families have to do pay that we can get that information to you. But CDC, as a state preschool program, like Head Start, I point to Dr. Sosa Valderrama, who once led our Head Start, they have income requirements. And so students, families that are earning below certain income levels are-- it's free. The program is free. And for most of our families, that is the case. There are families, though, who need the childcare for students, their children who may be two, three, four years old, who don't yet qualify for TK programs, for example, that do-- we do make some-- have some slots that are available for them where it is a fee-based program. So there is an analysis that's done between doctor-- I'm sorry, Ms. Forrester, our Director of CDC, with our Budget Department to determine what is the cost of those fee-based slots, if you will, and how do we make sure that we're always staying where we're kind of breaking even? We do want to prioritize our CDC funding primarily for those families who are below the income levels, so we have the slots that we want available to families so they don't have to pay. The families who are paying for these fee-based generally are, you know, they're making often cases well above the income levels. They're-- even $60 a day is incredibly cheap compared to some other private or center-based childcare. That's not to say that the $15 a day won't be impactful to families, but it is still well below the kind of the going rate of childcare within our community. But just trying to keep up with the increased cost of employees, increased cost of inflation. But through an analysis with our Budget Department, they determined that $60 was appropriate for the next couple of years.
Quick follow-up, Mr. Moskowitz, thank you. So the word on the street is that the Mayor's Fund for Education is out fundraising precisely to help fund opportunities for access to early education. So I know that we actively participate, you know, with the city and our ECE Committee, things like that. In the spirit of just, you know, being transparent that, yes, this is a subsidized opportunity here, but also wanting to provide access to those families that, you know, we all have been in spots where we know access to high-quality early education centers is important. What are our conversations right now, like, with the city, with the Mayor's Fund, and in other opportunities to address some of our areas ECE needs, Mr. Moskowitz?
Yeah, that's great. So we have-- we're part of the Long Beach Early Childhood Education Committee. We're active participants. We have leadership within that. And that is made up-- that's really a consortium of the school district, center-based care, family-based care. And that is really to make sure that we are providing as much coverage to all the families in the community who need care for their children. We know that we don't have enough slots between our CDC and Head Start programs to meet the needs of all families in our community. And so we work with other organizations, including family-based programs, to try to just make sure there's high-quality care throughout our community. Part of that with the Mayor's Fund is we have been working on what we call the HUB. You may have heard reference to that in the past, where we're trying to create an online portal, if you will, where families can go in, they can enter in the age of their children, their income levels, the type of program they're looking for. Some families want a home-based program that is more like their-- that is more like their home, potentially. And through this hub, we are then helping families to connect with those centers that might best meet their needs, meet their income levels. I believe as part of that work, the Mayor, City Council, through the Mayor's Fund, is trying to provide some subsidies to families who might want like a family-based program and can't quite afford it because of, you know, because of their income level. So I don't know specifically what you're referencing as far as fundraising, but I do know that those are the things that we've been working with Mayor's Fund on. We're partners with them. We're partners with the Long Beach GCE. Just trying to make sure that we provide a really broad net to try to get all families who might need that early care.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes four zero. Next, we have item seventeen point two, approval of three memorandums of understandings, the MOUs between the Teachers Association of Long Beach and Long Beach Unified School District.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. On the implementation of the uniform grading and reporting policy, the MOU states that the district shall ensure that during the initial year of implementation, individual teacher evaluations will not be based on the implementation of the uniform grading and reporting as long as the teacher is making good faith effort to follow policy and guidelines. So I guess my question is, what is a criteria for good effort? Because that can be subjective. A teacher may believe they're making sincere attempt to follow the policy and the guideline, and maybe their supervisor doesn't. So what is a criteria, one, and then two is, what training are we offering teachers as we approach the beginning of the school year?
I can speak briefly to that. I know that Mr. Rockenbach is not in today to speak to the specifics of that language. I was part of a committee that met with Talib Leadership to talk through this MOU. So this was language was agreed to by both the district and Talib Leadership. Oftentimes, when we talk about good faith, what we're looking for in this specific situation is, are teachers trying to implement the policy? Maybe they need some additional training, maybe they need additional support to implement it the way that they want to. Maybe they need to be able to work with colleagues to be able to do all the parts that we're seeking. Versus a teacher who just says, I refuse to follow the policy, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do any of the parts of it. That's the difference. What we're essentially saying is, we don't believe that for this next year, that grading needs to be part of a teacher's evaluation. We don't want it to be part of a teacher's evaluation. We want teachers to explore, to learn, to try things out, and we want to learn from teachers through that process. So we're not looking to make, following the grading policy part of the evaluation for this next year, assuming that a teacher, again, isn't just refusing to do it. So I can't speak to the exact definition of that term, but that was a language that was agreed to by both Talib and district leadership. As far as the training goes, we have established several different online resources for teachers. As you all will know, we have our pupil-free day, professional development day on the Friday before school starts. All of our teachers will be participating. Schools have the opportunity through their instructional leadership team to determine the topics that will be covered. And we have given principals the discretion with their leadership team to use, have the components of grading be part of that professional development day. So we will, we would expect that at many of our secondary schools, that will be a part of the work. So there'll be some professional development there. All of our curriculum documents and curriculum resources are being, our curriculum leaders are supporting the work through sample syllabi that teachers can use. We gave, principals have had multiple opportunities to kind of hear about the process. So there's a whole plan that's in place broadly. There are some days that are set aside. There are resources that are being implemented so that teachers feel successful starting from day one.
Hopefully, that there is some discussion, some kind of criteria given to them, just so that, you know, there isn't a situation where a teacher really thought that they were in good faith implementing these policies, and then it turns out that they may have not been the case from the lens of the administrator, or vice versa.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes four zero. And item number seventeen point three, resolution number zero seven one seven two four dash B, approving an energy conservation services contract in the form of a contract for design and construction with Mesa Energy Systems Incorporated, doing businesses EMCOR Services Mesa Energy. Mr. Rising?
Oh, do we have to get to discussion, or do we?
Well, yeah. Do you have a question for Mr. Rising?
No. I was just going to say move for approval.
Second.
And then we get to discussion.
And now we can have a discussion.
There we go.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Thank you. No problem. So President Craighead, board members and staff, today, I'm excited to be up here to present to you resolution number zero seven one seven two four B, which is approving an energy conservation services contract with EMCOR Energy doing business as EMCOR Services. On October the tenth of 2023, the district released an RFP for solar photovoltaic systems at sixteen of our school sites across the district. These school sites were selected largely on physical space availability at a school site, as well as energy characteristics, essentially our highest users, where we get the largest benefit from solar. Ultimately, the district received five proposals from interested firms, and those proposals were reviewed to evaluate criteria such as the qualifications and experience of those firms, the financial strength of those firms to be able to complete the project, the proposed lifecycle savings that each of the proposals were proposed to give us, as well as the firm's project approach and methodologies. Ultimately, EMCOR Mesa Energy was selected as the best overall proposal. The total project cost is seventeen million eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars, including appropriate contingencies to account for unforeseen conditions, and will be funded with our building program bond funds. In accordance with Government Code forty-two seventeen, the project costs were analyzed by ARC Consulting to verify the expectations, the expected performance of these systems. When completed, the systems will generate about two point nine megawatts of power, resulting in an annual energy savings of about one point six million dollars to the district. The entire portfolio will have a simple payback period of approximately eleven years. Following the payback period, the portfolio will result in an additional twenty-three point five million dollar savings to the district over the twenty-five-year expected lifespan of these systems. If approved, the program will begin construction in January of 2026 and be completed by June of 2026. This program is in alignment with our Vision 2035 sustainability goals. Converting our existing electrical utility power into solar will reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to a tune of about three hundred and ninety metric tons of carbon per year. That's the equivalent of about two thousand three hundred gasoline-powered cars that will be taken off the street, as well as the power equivalent to about thirteen hundred typical homes. Or another way to say about two and a half, twenty-five point seven million smartphones charged on these systems. And lastly, this program will be eligible for us to apply for inflation recovery dollars from the federal government, which could offset anywhere from thirty to forty percent of these costs, further leveraging these dollars to ensure that we get additional energy savings to the district. So today, our recommendation is for the board to approve this resolution and approve the contract with Mesa Energy to move forward with new solar systems at our school sites. And I'm available for any questions.
Though it's small, I always like another pat on the back for the district is with some of these panels that are getting put in. Will that change the LEED certification on any of these campuses? Giving us being a LEED certified campus? I know that we have some of our campuses that are LEED certified.
Yeah, so these systems alone will not bring us into LEED certification. LEED certification is a holistic approach. We'll need to look at all of the other elements at the school sites. As a component of our modernization program, that is an element that we might want to look for as we move forward. Generally speaking, the district aligns with the LEED criteria, but doesn't apply for LEED certification, only because there's quite a bit of overhead and costs that go into just getting that certification. So we do align our program with those LEED goals, but we don't really go after the LEED certification, if that makes sense.
With having LEED cert buildings, one of the heaviest lifts is having some form of energy savings, like these panels. That's why, like,
Yes.
I do, I know that there's obviously a lot more when it comes to the siding and some of the recycling processes, yes. But I also, when I hear that, like, we're doing half of the lift right here when it comes to how we're doing our energy conservation, I was just curious if any of these projects would potentially be able to, or with some of these projects, we'd be able to look at like a campus like Browning that's still fairly new, that, you know? I don't know. Just a thought.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely something we can look into. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just one more clarifying question. Alan, did I understand correctly? Did you say a time period for project is January to June?
Yes, that's.
That fast?
That's currently, yeah. There's a lot of design work that needs to happen. Once we actually get into construction, they go up pretty quickly. They're basically large carports, and they go up fairly quickly. There's a lot of work that will need to be done in ahead to get the plans approved, materials acquired, a lot of things in place to do that, but that's the current plan to do that within that six-month period.
I'm going to hold you to that, Mr. Rising. I don't think I've ever heard you or anyone on facility say a project of this scale would be done in six months.
Yeah. Hold me to it. Yes, please.
That's great. Great.
Okay, well, good news all the way around. I believe we're ready for a vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Rising. Yeah, that's exciting. Let's see. Well, we'll start at this side. Ms. Lopez, board reports?
Sure. Well, summer program is coming to an end, and I just want to thank the students, the administrators at each site for hanging in there this long, and I hope you have a restful summer. And I also want to take this opportunity just to emphasize the importance of creating the data dashboard we were talking about this morning. Other large public school districts or other districts have dashboards available to the public, and I do believe we need to make data accessible to parents and stakeholders sooner rather than later. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, just very quickly to build on Ms. Lopez's comments about this morning. So I would encourage, first, thank you to our team for putting together presentations from this morning's workshop. I would encourage our community members and employees to check out the updates on the technology infrastructure side. A lot of the things that we've been talking about for a couple of years now, we have some timelines and some tangible concrete next steps, and making some big investments in those areas around our technology infrastructure, including cybersecurity and the use of AI in our district. So thanks to Jack and the team for that presentation. And then second part of our workshop was focused on our board work around student outcomes-focused governance. As I referenced in my business department report, we have a monitoring calendar that will guide our efforts around our board goals one through four this upcoming academic year. And we had a good conversation around how to maximize our board meeting time, how to make sure there's alignment with our district priorities, our LCAP priorities, our superintendent's goals, and our board goals, and ensuring that we fulfill and uphold that promise around student success in our district. So I appreciate the conversation, colleagues, and the time and effort that it goes to putting workshops together. And I encourage our community members, who may not be aware, that we've been meeting here since about nine-thirty this morning, that although tonight's meeting may seem short, we got some good work done earlier today. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, so I'll be brief. Today, earlier today, I had the opportunity to be the guest reader for a program that I'm very much supportive of, and it's in alignment with one of our board goals in regards to helping our students read by third-grade level, and that is Freedom School. So Freedom School Long Beach is an initiative by the Californian, no, I'm sorry. It is the, is it the California Defense Fund? Children's Defense Fund, I'm sorry. Children's Defense Fund. It's a federal program, not a state program. But all things considered, it has been centered around helping African-Americans improve their reading skills. And as somebody who was an intern and now somebody who gets to be a guest reader, I am just always thoroughly, thoroughly impressed with both Freedom School Long Beach, but more importantly, those young people who are spending their time over the summer, not only getting to spend quality time with their friends, but really wanting to improve their academic performance, especially in the reading department. With that said, the Freedom School Long Beach is overseen by Success and Challenges, and two of their leaders, I will call them, are Dr. Reverend Wood and Ms. Paula Wood. And they were given the key to the city yesterday, and so I just wanted to send them a big congratulations for all of their work that they've done in the city of Long Beach as it stretches even further than Freedom School, as they have just been on the forefront of wanting to help people that have experienced any form of disadvantage. And they've always been on the forefront of that, and I'm just very, very appreciative of them. And I wanted to thank our mayor Rex Richardson for bestowing them with that honor, along with the Woods family. Our friend and buddy, Mr. Skip Kiesel, was also granted this honor. And so I wanted to send a big congratulations to him and his wife as well for all of their work. One of the things that was shared at the ceremony yesterday, which was just astounding, I don't know if you guys have ever gotten to go to one of the ceremonies over at Kiesel, Young, and Logan, but if you've ever seen an elected official taking a picture behind a big glass pane, and there's green carpet, there's a ninety-nine percent chance it's over at Skip's law firm. But all things considered, he has hosted thousands of fundraisers for organizations in Long Beach. And when I say he hosts, I mean he'll host for hundreds of people, and it will be at no cost. And to date, they counted that he has hosted, are you ready for this, over twenty-two hundred events for nonprofits in the city of Long Beach in his tenure. So you can imagine how many organizations didn't have to carry the burden of trying to find a venue or trying to find somebody to cater an event while they're doing these important resource garnering for their organization. Skip has taken on that burden for them, and he's done it for hundreds of organizations for, I think, almost fifty years now, is what he said. And so I'm just very, very appreciative of both his work and the Woods family. So I just wanted to send them a follow-up congratulations to the key to the city that they received yesterday. That's my report.
Thank you. I will just add my gratitude to staff, especially Jack Kalanick and the other folks in our IT department for coming up with that wonderful presentation and getting us to talk about things like, you know, AI and cybersecurity. And it really, it really speaks to the complexity of the district and what it takes to to really get things accomplished, and it's our IT department, it's our research department. It's all these, it's all these things that we don't see on a regular basis. It's everybody behind the scenes that truly make us look good up here because you're providing us with that foundation and with the structure so that we can go forward with the work. I know that everybody on the executive team, you know, relies on, you know, those types of foundations. So thank you for that work, and it's wonderful to see people face-to-face. it's, it's wonderful to, um, see people face-to-face and hear, um, the, uh, passion that you have for the work that you do. That's always good. And it, it gives us an opportunity, um, uh, not just for the board to get to know you, but also a- as a, um, a public-facing event like a, a meeting this morning. And then our conversation about board governance and everything. Um, the, let's see, the, uh, I do want to talk about an event, um, well, not event, uh, a, a, a site visit, actually. Dr. Baker and I, um, went to, uh, visit the Sankofa program in progress over at Homes and visit with the students and the teachers. And, uh, this summer, there's a focus on art and how, um, how art relates culturally and, uh, and, uh, don't know what that was. But, um, anyhow, it's always a very enjoyable time when you, when you get to see the kids. We, we were in and out of classrooms. Uh, let's see, we visited the ground education going on outside, and then we went into classrooms. And it might look a little different from the younger kids to the older kids, but the kids were all engaged in very, um, good conversation. There was one class we went into. They, because the, um, overall theme was art, they were, um, discussing the, uh, what? Uh, they were discuss- I don't know what you're doing.
We're giving you a yes.
Oh, okay. Like, uh, they were discussing the, um, the connection between music and math. So music and math. And so there was this, um, uh, class assignment to come up with their own rap song, but they changed the lyrics to make it all math-related, or what they're, what they've been talking about in the classroom. The kids loved the assignment, absolutely loved it, and they were so happy to perform it for us. And so we were able to, um, watch their performances. And one of the teachers, one of the teachers performed her own song, because she said, "I'm not gonna ask the kids to do anything. I wouldn't do myself." And I thought that was a, a very important lesson for us as adults. If we're asking our kids to do something, we have to be able to do that.
So I'm hearing you're gonna bust a freestyle for us right now, President Krakhead?
I, I think your ears are all plugged up, because that is not what I said. Although, if you wrote something, um, I would make you perform it. So, um, so thank you to all of our, um, teachers for making programs like Sankofa so enjoyable and so educational for our kids. There's so much joy going on in addition to educating our kids. Um, it's just wonderful to see. Uh, Dr. Baker?
I don't have a report tonight, but I would like to acknowledge an important transition happening for us tonight in the change in general counsel that we will experience. So just want to thank, publicly thank Wayne Strumfer for his service two years as general counsel. Retiring after, yeah. Wayne has had an amazing career in legal services up and down the state of California. We are so fortunate to have him for two years of service to Long Beach Unified School District, to the school board, and to our entire staff and organization, and just have appreciated his attention to relationship-building and to defining what it can mean to have general counsel in a district as well as system development. So you will be greatly missed. Sitting next to him is new general counsel, who will be on his own starting Monday, Jeff, introducing Jeff Riel, um, who comes to us also extremely experienced in the field of education, has served in a number of organizations, has had long tenure in organizations. And so we are glad to have him joining our team and look forward to the service that he will provide. Yeah.
Right. Thank you. Um, well, unbelievably, and it's still light out, um, that concludes tonight's meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is, uh, August seventh. So thank you for joining us. Um, and without any objection, we will adjourn the meeting.